Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Norristown Council meeting of October 6, 2015. If you please rise for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
William Caldwell.
Here.
Gary Simpson.
Here.
Marlon Milner.
Here.
Olivia Brady.
Here.
Derrick Perry.
Here.
Sonya Sanders.
Here.
Linda Christian.
Here. Counsel, I'd like to make a motion to open the agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is open. We have one item that did not appear on the published agenda, and it is to act on a settlement. Mr. Kilkeny, can you just state the process for what we're doing?
Sure. I would suggest that someone go ahead and...
Wait a second.
...make a motion to approve the settlement agreement among the redevelopment authority of Montgomery County, Norristown, the county of Montgomery, and authorize Norristown officials to sign the settlement. In relation to Studio Center and Charles Gallup, the municipality went ahead and along with the county entered into a sharing agreement to pursue litigation against Mr. Gallup to collect revenues in relation to Studio Center, and we are at the conclusion of that thing.
Thank you, Mr. Kilkeny. Counsel, would a council member like to act on that particular item?
So moved.
And then we have special counsel here, Ms. Ann Thornburg Weiss of the law firm of Timony Knox. Would counsel like to hear from her briefly about this?
Yes, I think that would be a good idea. Ms. Weiss, if you could come forward and just give a real brief explanation of what we're working on. Yes, please.
As the solicitor indicated, the matters that involved Mr. Gallup have been winding down in view of his declaration of... That, you know, for... Sorry. His petition for bankruptcy is close to being settled, and therefore, we are wrapping up, as was indicated, the outstanding transactions that we in the county have against him as a result of his defaults. So what we are doing is requesting that the council approve the proposed settlement and authorize us to proceed to end the matters, along with the bankruptcy.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss. Counsel, are there any questions? Because this wasn't an item that we did not have listed on the agenda, are there any questions from those who are in attendance tonight?
It is a multi-party agreement involving the county, the municipality, and the redevelopment authority.
Thank you. And Mr. Kilkeny, our next up is...
To call vote.
To roll call vote it?
Yes.
Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
William Caldwell.
Aye.
Gary Simpson.
Aye.
Marlon Milner.
Aye.
Olivia Brady.
Aye.
Derrick Perry.
Aye.
Sonya Sanders.
Aye.
And Linda Christian.
Aye. Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. The next item on our agenda regards the minutes for our September 15, 2015, council meeting. Would a council member like to act on that? No?
No.
Thank you, Councilwoman Brady. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Prior to tonight's meeting, council met in executive session to discuss legal matters.
That would be litigation that was the subject of the settlement.
Correct.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Kilkeny. Counsel, next up is Resolution 15-144, appointing William Kane as officer with the Norristown Police Department. Would a council member like to act on that motion?
So moved.
Do I... This don't require roll call, do it?
It's a resolution, so it does.
Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
William Caldwell.
Aye.
Gary Simpson.
Aye.
Marlon Milner.
Aye.
Olivia Brady.
Aye.
Derrick Perry.
Aye.
Sonya Sanders.
Aye.
Linda Christian.
Aye. Officer Kane, Chief Talbot would meet me on the floor.
Up front.
Yeah, that's what I mean. And the Bible's on the ground.
Do you have a person you'd like to hold fights for?
My father. Chief Charlie, you want to come up as well?
You're going to stand right next to him. And you're going to place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. That's correct, right, Chief? Left hand Bible, right hand swear. And can you choose to swear or not? Please repeat after me. I, William Kane, do solemnly swear...
I, William Kane, do solemnly swear...
...that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will support, defend, and constitute the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Charter of the Municipality of Norristown.
The Charter of the Municipality of Norristown.
And the laws of Pennsylvania and the Municipality of Norristown. And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And the Municipality of Norristown.
And the Municipality of Norristown.
I will dischuse... I'm sorry, I will discharge the duties of my office.
I will discharge the duties of my office.
As a police officer for the Municipality of Norristown.
As a police officer for the Municipality of Norristown.
Police Department.
Police Department.
With honor and fidelity.
With honor and fidelity.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce...
I will uphold, obey, and enforce...
...the laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the Municipality of Norristown.
And the Municipality of Norristown.
Without consideration to a person's race.
Without consideration to a person's race.
Color, sex, religious creed.
Color, sex, or religious creed.
Sexual orientation or age.
Sexual orientation or age.
National origin, ancestry.
National origin, ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Congratulations. Officer Kane, welcome to the Norristown Police Department. We're happy to have you onboard. Next up on the agenda is a presentation of the 2014 audit.
Good evening. My name is Dale Almbenhauer. I'm the manager with the independent accounting firm that does the audits for the municipality. I'm here tonight to present the 2014 audited financial statements, copies of which had previously been distributed. I'm going to take a few minutes and just go over some highlights. Now that we've gotten caught up with the audits, with the completion of the 2014 audit, we've done audits for 2011, 2012, 2013, and 2014. So I just wanted to go over a few highlights from that four-year span. Notably, the liabilities, which is the long-term debt on a government-wide basis, has decreased by $6 million over that four-year period, also increasing the fund balance. There's two ways that government financial statements are presented. One is on a government-wide basis, which is more like a for-profit business that shows debt and capital assets. The other way is on a fund-level basis, which only shows expenditures and revenues and current assets and liabilities. So the main fund of the municipality is the general fund. So for the four-year span, for the audits that we completed, the assets for the general fund increased by $2 million. Liabilities increased by a minimal $100,000, and then the fund balance increased by 1.9 million. Revenues averaged $28.4 million over the four-year period. Expenditures averaged $24.5 million. Current long-term debt for bonds at the end of 2014 is right around $20 million. I wanted to take a few minutes to talk about Gatsby 68, which is coming up for the municipality effective with the year ending December 31, 2015. What that does is it pushes the unfunded liability for your pension plans onto your balance sheet. We're currently going through that with all of our school district clients right now because they're June 30 year ends, and I can tell you that it's a painful process to go through the first time. As of the most recent actuary report for the municipality, which was dated January 1, 2013, it's $16.2 million liability that'll be pushed onto the balance sheet as of the end of 2015. 1-115 should have a new actuary report finished, so by the time we come in to do the 2015 audit, that should have been completed and issued. The liability has been trending upward, so I would not have any reason to think that it would go down from the $16 million that I just said. The other thing that I wanted to point out is the OPEB liability, which is your other post-employment benefits, which is the health insurance for the retirees. That liability has been increasing around $200,000 a year and is currently at $1.2 Are there any questions?
Counsel, any questions?
Bill, are you going to wait till I walk away?
Mr. Jones and Ms. Burkett, do you want to take us from this point on as it relates to the audit and the presentation?
I know Councilmember Caldwell had some comments, but I did want to share something. Go ahead.
No, I just, I really had a question, actually, that I was thinking about, but what is our fund balance currently as a percent to the... As a percentage of our revenue? I mean, I'm glad to hear it's up. That's excellent. I'm assuming somewhere in the 10% to 20% range. That's all right.
Couple of things. Number one, we actually, next month, will be giving a pretty comprehensive report to council in terms of the current financial status of the municipality. And I do want to say, number one, glad that we got these audits done and glad that we know where our... Where we stand financially. I think that kind of put us in a position of really not being able to move forward in an effective way until we knew exactly where we were. I want to certainly thank our auditors for the work and the professional work that they did in working with the team, but most importantly for me, I want to make it known and I think recognize Shannora Burkett and her team. To come in into an operation and actually complete, lead the completion of six audits in one year's time period is no small feat. I've had to do something similar before, and I know the... That's probably why I'm going to stay ball as a result of going through that process. But the good news here that I always had was that we were financially sound because there were no indicators that there were any financial issues other than those that other municipalities' pension, health benefits have to deal with. There were no issues of illegality or anything like that. And so I want to certainly recognize and commend Shannora and her team for the outstanding work they did. She led them through a process that honestly, our finance department had not had the experience of having in terms of increasing their capacity and ability to do that. And it's our intention that going forward, our audits will be on time every year, and we certainly not during my tenure and not during Ms. Burkett's tenure, will there be a time when we are late, and certainly not that late in getting audits done. So thank you, Shannora, and thank your team again for the work that they did.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And with that being said, counsel also thanks the two of you, and more importantly, you guys have completed so many audits that we feel we've really gotten to know you in a very well way, and we appreciate your patience and your ability to address all questions and concerns coming from the council regarding past audits and even advice on some of the areas that we may want to look at. I really do appreciate the work that you did on behalf of the municipality. And Ms. Burkett, again, we really appreciate, we know this, and we think that you do very fine work. Thank you. Before we end the presentation, is there any council member that wanted to make a comment? No? Okay, just checking. I don't want you guys to accuse me of anything. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda is an appointment to the Special and Cultural Events Committee. I will read Resolution 15-147 of 2015, and ask that a council member act upon it following the reading regarding appointment to the newly established Special and Cultural Events Committee. Whereas in Norristown, Municipal Council is desirous of appointing qualified citizens to the Special and Cultural Events Committee, now therefore be it resolved, Norristown Municipal Council appoints the following qualified citizen... Special and Cultural Events Committee, two-year term, effective January 1, 2016 to December 31, 2017. Elizabeth Sipan to replace Elizabeth Morrison. Resolved and enacted this sixth day of October, 2015, in council chambers. Would a council member like to act on that resolution?
Second.
Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
William Caldwell.
Aye.
Gary Simpson.
Aye.
Marlon Milner.
Aye.
Olivia Brady.
Aye.
Derrick Perry.
Aye.
Sonya Sanders.
Aye.
Linda Christian.
Aye. Vice President Sanders, are there any announcements?
Yes, Madam President, thank you. There are several announcements. This Saturday, October 10, will be the Norristown Car Show, which would benefit Gosemane Missionary Baptist Church. That will be held between Main Street and Arch Street, with DeKalb Street being open. At the phases of Main and Sweet Street, there will be a burnout demonstration, although there's not a time listed, and the event will take place from 10 to 3:30 p.m. There will be a 42nd Annual Egyptian Festival, where there will be gourmet Middle Eastern food, Mediterranean groceries, artwork, Coptic music, church tours, handmade jewelry, and much more. And again, that's Saturday as well, from noon to 8 p.m. And also on Sunday, October 11, with the hours of noon to 6 p.m. On Monday, October 12, we will be observing Columbus Day, and that event will be held at the Columbus Monument on Harding Boulevard, and the time will be at 11 o'clock a.m. And lastly, October 17, there will be the Convoy of Hope, which presents Save a Life Tour, and that will be from noon to 5:00, and that will be held at DeKalb and Erie Street in the county parking lot, where there will be concerts, food, and beverages. And as a special note, I would like to thank the Chief and Lieutenant Greenway for assisting the Norristown High School football team, where they help serve the youngsters and the youth to encourage them. And I see Saul, that you guys were in the Times, Earl, and I'm sure you guys gave them plenty of encouragement, but unfortunately, they lost that night very badly. So perhaps maybe you guys may have scared them a little. But again, thanks, and it serves well to the youth, and again, it shows that we're working well as a community. So again, thanks. Does anyone else have any other announcements? Madam President.
Yes, I do have one announcement. It's early on, but on December 18, on December 18, for our second of the month council meeting, we will be celebrating and recognizing Councilman Caldwell and Councilman Simpson. Their plan's already in the works for a reception in the lobby following the council meeting, and we'll be inviting, of course, your family members. So I just wanted the public to also know, on December 18, we will be recognizing their services. That will be their last council meeting for Norristown.
Councilman Perry.
Yeah, October 24, at the Norristown Farm Park, making strides against breast cancer, we'll have a 5K here in Norristown, starting at 8:00 in the morning, ending at 10:00. We want to try to pink the town pink, so let's all come out to that. Let's support our town in regards to that. Breast cancer, October 24.
24, thanks.
Okay, that concludes the announcements.
Thank you, Vice President Sanders.
You're welcome.
Madam Secretary, is there anyone signing up for public comment?
Yes. Ajay Richardson.
Ms. Richardson, you want to come to the front? And when you go on the mic, be sure to give your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Ajay Richardson, and my address is 822 Cherry Street. And I have an introduction. Winter, spring, summer, fall, this junior preteen does it all. I am an all-star cheerleader, an award-winning volunteer, and a proud Pennsylvania Girl Scout. Although I'm only 10 years old, the forecast for my future sure looks bright. One day, I'll be a star on ABC News as your very own meteorologist from Norristown, prepared to weather any storm. I am Ajay Richardson. I also represent the Nor... I also represent Norristown, and at the end of this month, I will be doing the 5K Walk, and I will also be handing out waters, and that's it.
Well, that's a lot. That's impressive.
Thank you.
Ms. Richardson, before you go to your seat, I believe I met you during the Habitat for Humanity event Saturday or so again ago, and I was really impressed with your attitude, with your help, with everything about you. And I believe Council Vice President Sanders had an opportunity to also meet and speak with you. Did you want to share, Councilwoman Sanders?
Yes, I had the opportunity to also meet them at the Habitat of Humanity. However, when I went to the Convoy of Hope at Eisenhower Middle School, they were actually my first guests that I saw. And she came over, and her mom was like, "Can you take a picture with her?" And I'm like, "Me? Okay, sure." But anyhow, she had her sash on, and I'm like, "Well, what's this about?" So she began explaining a little bit more to me about the program. So I invited them here tonight, so she could express her talents. As you can see, she definitely has talent and skill set, and I wish you much success, and I wish you go far.
Thank you.
And it was a pleasure meeting you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for stopping by to visit us, and you're doing an excellent job at representing your hometown, Norristown. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Secretary.
Good evening. My name is Anna Urban-Gahmen. I live at 102 Hawes Avenue here in Norristown.
Aye.
We met a couple weeks ago. Reason why I'm here, actually, it's a very difficult act to follow, but let me put it forward. I wanted to talk about a little bit park safety in Norristown and police involvement, if possible. My husband disagrees with me on that one, that we cannot regulate people to be more civilized and act more social, but I a little bit disagree to the level of what I have witnessed so far. My daughter and I like to go down to the River Farm Park, which is right next door to us, and we like to feed the duckies, and there is certain activity going down in the park that is highly unsuitable for a young child to witness, and I, as an adult, find it very offensive as well. Usually, there are cars parked side by side, blasting music, lyrics that I do not really want my two-year-old to pick up, and cursing words are left and right from all directions, either blasting from the cars, five of them at the same time, or people just having a casual discussion, which is from the top of their lungs, screaming profanities at each other, and this is business as usual down at the park. I have tried to be nice about it and ask people to keep it down a little bit because there are young kids around, and my child is not the only one around in these circumstances, and sometimes they do comply, sometimes they don't. And there is a stench of urine down there, and I know that there are steps taken to really clean up the parks. I know that the River Park has a new resident with the boat club, and they have been doing wonderful events, the ones that you have been attending, and other couple council members as well. And that attracts a really nice crowd, where civility and the family environment is really representing Norristown as it should be. However, people who come by, sometimes they pick up on these clues that they're supposed to act a certain way, and sometimes they don't, and I think it represents the town in a really negative way. I know that the town doesn't have a ton of resources, and I was really happy to see that we were able to hire a new police officer, which is greatly going to help our efforts. And I'm not saying to show up waving your gun or your badge, but sometimes police need to do their paperwork, for instance, and I have seen them park their car on the far end of the park. I think it would do a great presence to sort of settle down the commotion, just park the car right where people are and do the paperwork there. You don't have to do anything major. You can do the paperwork there. Just, I don't know. I've given up taking my daughter to the parks, like at Elmwood Park, as we're across from Elmwood Park, there's a nice park, a playground, because we come across drug bags, trash, all over the place. I came over a couple of times to clean up the park, but I have only 24 hours in a day, and I have to attend to... And I have to attend to my priorities as well. So I'm asking the town to do something about cleaning up the town a little bit, sort of the full cleaning. I don't know what we can do to make it better. Picking up trash is one aspect of it. But at the same time, people need to act civilized. And I know that we have laws on our books that permit this, that people need to behave properly and not in a disorderly way. And when they are drinking from open bottles and smoking the funny cigarettes or just smoking all over the place, I don't know, it's just very distressing for me. So I was wondering if you guys do something about it or take my suggestions into consideration as far as having a little bit of police presence down there. Also, we have on the pathway homeless people living. I called the cops a couple times because of the issue, because there was certainly drug activity going on. They showed up, and within five minutes, three cops showed up, like in a really high speed. So I assumed it would be taken care of. The person still lives there. Two weeks later, my husband had to call the cops again because he was taking my daughter down to the river. And there was a big fight with the homeless person, where they get into a bleeding fistfight of some sort. And my daughter got obviously upset. So there is lots of activity down there that is very, very questionable. And I would like to be taken care of. And finally, nice to meet you. We had a little bit of email discussion previously. So I hope you can take my crying out here a little into your heart and come up with some good ideas. Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you for attending and updating us on your experience in the park. And you did say Riverfront Park, correct?
Correct.
Now, I thought I heard you mention another park, did you?
Between the Columbus Monument and the Elmwood Park Zoo, there is that really nice park, the Elmwood Park.
Right.
And they have a playground right next to the stage area, or right behind the stage area. I used to take my daughter down there until I kept having the same issues with the trash and the drug baggies and whatnot. And I went down there a couple times to clean it up with my rubber gloves and the big trash bags. But I cannot do that every single time to show up to a park. So I'm just taking her to a different park. And I set up a place in our backyard. So that's one I just gave up on completely. But the Riverfront Park is such a nice asset to Norristown. And I just don't want to see it to go to waste when people are putting such effort into there to beautifying it and bringing really nice events and making it a really social environment where people want to participate in.
Okay, thank you. Again, I appreciate your comments. And I will be on the lookout at Elmwood Park for the things that you've witnessed. I know I walked my dog around the park at least three times, you know, during the week. And I'll make sure I pay extra attention, you know, to see if I notice the things that you described. Chief, did you want to comment before I moved on?
Thank you so much for letting us know what you see. I'll definitely follow up and get back to you. And we'll make it better.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief. Madam Secretary, any others?
No, that's it.
Any, I mean, communication? No communication, thank you. Moving into the action items. On the agenda, there is an item related to the Langen Environmental Engineering for EPA Community Wide Brownfield Assessment. Mr. Jones, who will be leading us in that conversation?
Thank you, Madam President. We actually have, sitting in Miss Sonia's place, is sick tonight, Michelle Samples, who is our planner. And she will lead us through this discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are just requesting for the community-wide brownfield consultant to be awarded to Langen Environmental. I reviewed nine proposals. And they're the ones that scored the highest. So we are requesting for it to be awarded to them.
Okay.
If I also might add, Council, as you recall, back earlier in the year, EPA awarded us the $200,000 grants to continue our work. They had previously given us $400,000 to do assessments of properties as well earlier. Langen was also the vendor that won that contract. They've done an outstanding job. And as a matter of fact, they led us through the application process for this second round of grants that we got. As Michelle said, she was charged with reviewing all of the applications. Langen scored highest and as the firm that had the best understanding of the project. Since the inception of this project, I think they've done an assessment of multiple projects, over 60 properties. And 10 of those properties, I think we've done assessments on Phase 1 environments. They've identified 60 or plus. 10 of them, we've done environmental assessments on them. So what that does is put us, as a municipality, in a good place in terms of councils desire for redevelopment in the downtown. Because one of the big steps that you have to take in doing redevelopment projects is to know what's under the ground before a developer, as a part of helping a developer get interested. Having those Phase 1 environmental assessments done puts us a step closer and makes us a lot more competitive in terms of that's a cost that a developer doesn't have to assume in taking a property or pursuing a property. And it's one that the owner, as a result of the grant, does not have to take that on as well. As you also recall, one of our goals in going into Washington was to meet with the EPA. Because of our schedule, we didn't get a chance to do it. But we are going to reschedule. They are very much interested in working with us and have indicated such in moving to the next phase of projects and doing that, which is actually some remediation money. So we'll be leaning heavily on Greg's expertise. And Greg is out there. You can wave your hand, Greg, so they know. Greg and Langen's expertise in helping us to pursue those funds that even take us to that next step, that if we can get some properties actually remediated, they are ready for development.
Thank you. Councilwoman Brady, I saw you had your hand up.
I did. But thank you, Mr. Jones, had answered those questions. So I appreciate that.
Hey, Council, any other questions? Would a council member like to act on this motion?
I got it. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. For the next item on our agenda, it is relating to the construction contract for Non-West Main Street. And Ms. Sample, I know you're sitting in for Jane for this particular item. But I would ask if Mr. Jones would give an update on this particular matter.
Okay, there we go. Thank you, Madam President. This, what actually is before you in this matter is the results of an RFP that was issued in August seeking, I'm sorry, still on the same agenda. Let me scroll through. It's longer than I thought.
Technology, please.
Technology.
Paperwork's well.
Yep. Okay. All right. Okay. So this is actually a request for Council to approve a recommendation for the award to MCR Services for a construction contract at 9 West Main Street as a part of the Economic Development Initiative that we have going on at that project. As you know, the project at 9 West Main Street is owned by Mr. Michael Al-Haddad. And several months back, Council, he presented this project in which Council made an award of $160,000 for construction related to the project. I think is, one of the things I want to make clear is, as there's been much discussion public about this, this project was never about recruitment of a restaurant. The project was a construction project for the restaurant facility within the existing developer's property. Council may be aware, is aware, I'm sorry. I may recall the fact that we had shared on multiple occasions how the developer has invested almost $3 million, I'm sorry, over $3 million in both acquiring and doing work on the property to make, to construct first-nounced luxury condominiums with a commercial use on the bottom floor, which is exactly in line with our strategy for mixed-use development downtown. That was three years ago that he purchased that property. And there has been, he has had some difficulty in terms of attracting tenants up until the course of the last year, when actually, some of the tenants were those who were totally out of line, those seeking to be tenants in the facility, were totally out of line with what the councils and municipalities' vision are for downtown. One being, one of the businesses seeking was a drug rehab center. One was an adult daycare facility that they want to operate out of 9 West. And that was not in line with our strategy for what is considered the 100% block of our downtown A1 Prime property for economic development and an anchor property in the downtown. So as a part of our work with the developer, we also had encountered Divas Restaurant in a discussion after a meal. And basically, Divas was interested in expanding her operations and coming to the downtown. The developer was looking to get a tenant. So in order to keep his interest in the building, and for us, certainly, we only can hold off so many times undesirable tenants. And we, you know, when he brought tenants, we asked him, no, not these tenants. I think a reasonable compromise was meet with Divas, see if there is any opportunity for you all to partner, for you to have, you know, that tenant in the restaurant portion of your facility, since she is seeking to expand. And so they met. He reviewed their books. He sight visited their property. He decided he wanted to partner with Divas. What we did then is in supporting a project which, oh, I will add that in terms of that relationship, I know Divas Restaurant also spent extensive time with the Small Business Assistance Center, because one of the discussions they had was about the vision both the developer in Norristown had for downtown and continued participation by the developer, not only in that project and others. And so they actually went, worked together with the Small Business Assistance Center, with Michael Al-Haddad's people, to come up with a model, a revised model for Divas that actually expanded the menu and revised the approach to focus on a dine-in restaurant in the downtown. So this was really primarily, our support initially was for 160. We did bids for the construction work, because none of the, not a dime of the work was actually going, or the money was actually ever going to Divas. It was for the construction work on the property. Those bids came back too high for the budget we had. We came to Council, asked Council to reset the budget and add another $90,000, which Council did. And we using CDB funds from our Economic Development Initiative to do it. Why that qualifies is because this is also, as a part of her plan and expansion, this is job creation. So she currently has five employees, would expand to seven employees, which qualifies it, both based on job creation and the demographics and economics related to Norristown for CDBG funding. We, so this is really, in terms of the Divas project, an expansion of a Norristown business as a result of a partnership with a prime developer. This project itself, as a construction project, we rebid it. Once we rebid it with the $250,000 budget, then MCR Services was the qualified bidder for the project. We had another bidder that came in. But they came in actually too late, after the bids had closed. So legally, we could not accept their bid. But this bid was certainly within, was within budget. It's been reviewed by engineers. It's been reviewed by staff. It is a qualified, it is a qualified budget. So it is staff's recommendation that Council approve this construction project. And we also asking that Council waive the review period so that we can alleviate as much as the hardship against the developer for having, I'm sorry, against the tenant and the developer for having, to have waited so long to go through the two bids.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Council, any questions? Councilwoman Brady?
The question I have is, can you flagrant withhold it from the highlights? All of the reasons that MCR missed it. I know you talked about the financial aspects of it. But does this bid include the things such as jobs in Norristown, minority residences, those types of things?
I'll let Michelle speak more detail to it. But yes, as a part of what we're doing with these funds, there are those types of requirements that are attached to CDBG funds. Michelle?
Yes, we reviewed the bids. And they, there's a checklist that is filled out. They, they're a part of the apprenticeship, Class A apprenticeship program. So they're members of that. And they don't have any subcontractors at this time. And they're not, they don't plan on using it. So we don't have a MBE or WBE business associated with them. But they meet all the requirements as far as being able, they're not, you know, they're not disbarred. They're able to bid on government jobs. And they meet all the apprenticeship class requirements. So, I mean, they meet all the requirements that we, as a municipality, have at Responsible Contractors Organants. They meet all the requirements in order to win this bid. So they're the responsible bidder.
Just a little bit further question regarding, would there possibly be any jobs available for Norristown residents in doing this construction work with this company?
With this company, yes. If they want to apply, there's always, I mean, I'm not sure what openings they would have. But yeah, we have, you know, we do a survey once we award the contract. And it says if there are any employees that work for them, live in Norristown. I'm not sure I understand. You want to know if it's in the construction? Yeah, if it calls for it, yes. Yes, I'm sorry.
Council, any other questions? And, yes. Councilwoman Milner?
Thank you. Mr. Jones, if I understand what you shared correctly, there was one bid, there was one respondent on the bid process this time?
There were two qualified, one, two respondents, one qualified.
Well, the one that was unqualified responded after the deadline, is that correct?
That's correct.
So there was, there was one bidder at the point where you opened the bid package, right?
One qualified, yes. Unqualified.
Okay. It's my understanding that as we went through this process of bidding this out three or four times, that there may have been some discussions with construction firms, with contractors? Is that the case?
We bid it out twice, and yes, we did have, after we, after the first bid came in, came in too high, we actually did have a discussion with the construction industry to find out why they were so high.
Okay. And did MCR bid on this the two prior times?
I don't, I'm not aware.
No, they did not.
And have we talked to anyone from MCR, affiliated with MCR, as we talked to the construction industry about the bids not being what we were looking for?
No, we conducted an interview with our engineer and architect with MCR, so we did, you know, we did our due diligence to ensure that they're qualified. You want to know if we spoke with any other construction industry regarding MCR?
No, I don't think you, I think you misunderstand my question. So to you or Mr. Jones, the question is, it's my, Mr. Jones just said we consulted with the construction industry after the first bid, and the bids came out, the respondents were too high, too costly, above the 160 budget. And so my question was, in talking to the construction industry, did anyone talk to someone at MCR or anyone affiliated with MCR as we redeveloped the bid package on two additional occasions?
No, I did not speak with them before it was rebid. We spoke with our engineer, which is Styler and Drury. They're the ones who we...
So, so hold on. Mr. Jones?
Let me clarify.
Yes. Who is the construction industry?
We talked to multiple, multiple people, I don't know specifically, I couldn't give you any names, but we talked to multiple individuals, companies that, why weren't they, why did they come in high, in terms of the initial bid package? We can go back and pull the names of those companies and provide that, but we didn't go to any company as a result of how they should bid on this, if that's, if that's where you're going.
No, it's, it's a general, I'm just trying to ask a general question, that if you've talked to people in the construction industry to get us to a place where we could get an acceptable qualified bidder, if at any time, one of those people you may have talked to was either MCR or someone connected to MCR?
No.
Oh, no.
Okay. In the packet that you provided, you asked us to not just approve this, but to waive a review period to ensure there's no undue hardship on the owner. Can you explain what the undue hardship might be?
And it's the owner and the owner's potential, owner's partner in this. Again, one of the things that has been going on, he needs a tenant. He's been ready for a tenant, this is one of the reasons this project was so important. We've got a prime developer who not only is doing this project, but is interested in doing other projects in Norristown, and he needs a tenant, he has the opportunity to have a tenant with a business model that he likes and a business ethic that he likes. And so not only is it a hardship for him to have to wait any longer, because this process had been dragged out extra months because of the rebid process, it also is a hardship on the tenant he's chosen, because she needs to get back up and operating as soon as possible. So that is, that is why, those two reasons are why we're asking for that waiver.
Right. So should we assume, it's always been understood that we were making the award to the property owner of Non-West, Mr. Hadad, or his operating entity? But are you saying that they are already in a lease agreement or in some kind of legal partnership agreement, that is, he and his proposed tenant, Divas Kitchen?
They're not in an agreement yet, but as counsel recalls at the presentation, that is, that is the partner that he selected for the project. Our issue is the project, the construction project itself, our focus is the construction project itself. I think the good news that everybody recognized, the developer, Divas, the counsel, and everybody who was witness to those meetings, was that here was an opportunity to actually realize a Norristown business that is doing well, has an opportunity to expand by moving its market from the perimeter to the downtown, and it's a success story for expansion. So that, that's the goal.
Okay. So in this bid, we've taken out some things, and we already know generally what those things are. Do you, are you aware of, you generally said that the developer, Mr. Hadad, has invested $3 million plus in acquisition primarily, and other costs as it relates to the PNC Building and this adjacent Nine West property. Are you aware of any investment he's going to make in the Nine West property alongside the investment that will occur with the quarter million dollars?
Absolutely. He is, not only in acquiring the property, but he's right now engaged in condominium development for the property.
No, I'm talking about the restaurant, I'm talking about the street-level retail, Nine West specifically.
Oh, for Nine West, not at, not at this moment. I know that in our discussions with counsel, that the goal ultimately is, once the business is in and operating, was to as much as possible expand that business, or the, expanding the capabilities of the property, so that there could be rooftop expansion of the restaurant as well. So long-term, there are plans, but it has not, you know, it's not started yet.
No, but when you say long-term, there are plans, are you suggesting that we'd be, the municipality may be making further future investments?
No, I'm, what I'm saying is that the developer has long-term plans for the, for the property.
Okay. So do you, explicitly, do you foresee additional investments, municipal investments made at Nine West after this?
At Nine West, no, I don't.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, Councilman Simpson?
Do we know what the timeline would be from construction to end?
I think because of weather, we set 120-day schedule, just because, because we're getting into that, that season with the hope that it would be done in no more than 90.
Okay. Now, even with it being an inside job, we still would have issues with, with weather per se?
Just, you know, bad days, if it snows or whatever, and you can't get, get to the, to the site, but I think everybody's ready to go.
Right, okay. So what, now, what is it, what is your intention for this evening?
It's asking counsel to approve the award to, to MCR Services for the construction contract to do the work at Nine West.
And then they'll start the work within the next...
Once we get all the documents signed, we do our final due diligence as far as what code and planning have to do, go to work as soon as possible.
Okay. So they haven't, they haven't had the plans approved yet for what the construction looks like, or...
No, we haven't received the plans yet. So turnaround time on a, on a set of plans like that is approximately 10 days. So from the time we receive them, assuming zoning's already taken care of, code enforcement will be ready to release the plans in less than two weeks.
All right, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Would counsel like to act on the recommendation to award MCR Services?
So moved.
Second.
This is all, this is not local. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One, the motion carries. And Ms. Murray, if you want to raise your hand, that's the tenant that will be moving into Nine West, and so we look forward to things moving along. Glad you were able to make it tonight. Moving on to Public Safety, Chief Talbot, would you speak to us about the resolution regarding Record Retention Act?
Sure. This is a routine process that we go through to get rid of old records that no longer are required to be kept around by law and by the policies that we have, so we're just asking that you approve the disposal that we intend.
Okay, counsel, any questions? Would a council member like to act on Resolution 15-145?
So moved.
Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
William Caldwell?
Aye.
Gary Simpson?
Aye.
Marlon Milner?
Aye.
Olivia Brady?
Aye.
Derek Perry?
Aye.
Sonya Sanders?
Aye.
Linda Christian?
Aye. That resolution passes. Chief Talbot, would you know about the firefighter?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Jones?
Okay.
You don't either?
No, I do. I absolutely do. This, this actually is a request that counsel approves a recommendation to hire an entry-level firefighter that, to request, to replace a career firefighter that, that retired a couple of months back. And we've done all our due diligence, he was, Andrew Stigler is his name, and he's passed all the phases of required civil service testing, and will replace Sharmouh Skinner, who retired, so there's not an addition, it is actually just bringing fire, our fire, fire fighter staff up to, back up to levels that...
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Counsel, any questions? Would a council member like to act on a motion related to the hiring of an entry-level firefighter?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Ms. Burkett, under Finance, will you be updating us on the consolidated fee resolution?
Yes, Madam President, thank you. Before you was presented a update of the fee resolution schedule, Resolution Number 15-146. It's basically for housekeeping purposes, clarifying some columns and moving some things around that where it made more sense. We moved the signature page to the front page. The one item that has been added as far as the fee schedule is the pawn dealer fee registration, which is on page 10. It is an annual fee for registered pawn shop dealers related to the Pawn Shop Ordinance Number 1503, dealing in precious metals and antiques and second-hand goods, as part of the annual process with the police in coordinating efforts to manage that. It will also be managed for enforcement by code enforcement. The other changes or reclassifications were basically just columns, straightening the columns out, aligning things properly. We removed the recycling trash can fee from the public work section of the fee resolution
Counsel, any questions? Ms. Burkett, were there any additions or increases in pricing?
The only increase in pricing was actually something that had been present in the 2007 fee resolution schedule that we identified had been missing, and that was for copies per page, it went from 25 cents to 50 cents.
Would a council member like to act on Resolution 15-146? Madam Secretary, roll call vote.
William Caldwell?
Aye.
Gary Simpson?
Aye.
Marlon Milner?
Aye.
Olivia Brady?
Aye.
Derek Perry?
Aye.
Sonya Sanders?
Aye.
Linda Christian?
Aye. That resolution passes. Mr. Simonson, do you have anything additional to add in this HARP Certificate of Appropriateness request?
Thank you, Madam President, but no, I do not have anything to add, just in a brief, this HARP request is for 1025 West Lafayette to make some modifications to a front beam and some associated wood structures. The HARP Board did review it, there is some stipulations that Mr. Manley is going to have to abide by, but he has signed off that he will. Code enforcement will inspect and follow up through.
Thank you, Mr. Simonson. Counsel, any questions? Would a council member like to act on the HARP Certificate of Appropriateness? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any, huh? Someone say something? Oh, I thought someone had a comment. Any opposed? The motion carries. Would a council member like to act on adjournment?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?